Please feel free to type questions or comments in the question box. That's the question box, not the chat box. And we hope to address your questions throughout the webinar, during the webinar, as well as toward the end of our hour today. If you requested an attendance certificate when you registered, you'll be receiving that by email. And if you have questions about those certificates, please contact Heather Wilson. And I believe she'll put her contact information in the question box as well as the chat box. I do want to offer a personal word of thanks to Churchwell Service, especially to Rebecca Blaise, Matthew Stevens, and Heather Wilson. And now it is my great honor to introduce our study presenter, Bishop Michael Gerlinghaus. Bishop Michael Gerlinghaus has served as bishop of the Arkansas Oklahoma Synod since July of 2011. Prior to being called to serve as bishop, he was pastor of University Lutheran Church in Norman, Oklahoma, and campus pastor for the University of Oklahoma. Ordained in 1987, Bishop Mike has served as a parish pastor, campus pastor in congregations in transition, or in need of a substitute pastor. Bishop Mike has also served as an instructor at two universities, teaching courses in death and dying and world religion. Bishop Mike was born in Milwaukee, Wisconsin, attended college at the University of Minnesota in Minneapolis, and seminary at Lutheran School of Theology in Chicago. He is married and has one adult daughter. He loves to cook, is a writer, and plays the trombone and the Jim Bay drum. Welcome, Bishop Gerlinghaus.
Thank you, Mary. It's good to be here. Give me one second here. I need to put my screen up. And I hope everybody can see that. We've only practiced this 20 times and it's worked every time. So you know how technology goes. Doesn't matter how many times you practice, when you actually do it, it almost always fails you, right? So anyway, welcome. It's good to be with you today. I was going to start by saying good morning, but I'm not sure it's morning where everybody is this morning. So whether it's morning or afternoon or evening where you are at, good morning. I want to start with a couple of just kind of quick thoughts before I dive into this. I am a bishop in the Evangelical Lutheran Church in America. Most of the work that went into the book that Mary recommended, thank you for that, was done in Evangelical Lutheran Church in America congregations and working with congregational systems. There are points along the way over the next four weeks. I'm going to be talking about congregational systems. But I also realized that there are a variety of different faith communities that are represented on this webinar. I will try very hard to refer to faith communities rather than churches because I know that many of you are part of other kinds of faith communities. But know that that is my frame of reference. I haven't really expanded this research or work into other kinds of faith communities. And so you might have to do some translating into your own faith communities and to your own settings. So with that being said, again, I'm grateful to be a part of this webinar and to have you be a part of this conversation. As I, before I dive into this, I want to say I am very aware of the fact in the congregation, with the congregations that I work with every day as bishop, of the kind of changes the congregations have experienced in the last three years. But really, there's been a lot of change in faith communities over the last decades. This has been a process that's been growing. And I'll say a few, a little bit more about that in just a few moments. So he asked us today that the spirit of cooperation of learning and of of new knowledge guides us. I find that every time I do one of these presentations, I learn at least a few new things. In fact, some days I think it's about time to maybe look and rewrite a couple of pieces of the book because I keep learning as I, as I do these. So I appreciate your questions. As we go through, if questions pop up in the question, I will do my best. Mary's going to kind of keep an eye on that. And I don't mind being interrupted. I'd rather have this be respond to your needs and your concerns rather than just listen to me drone on for an hour. And we will stop at the end for some questions and response. Used to tell my students, I don't do questions and answers. I do questions and responses because sometimes my answer to a question is, I don't know. And but then I'll see what I can do to find an answer for you. So I don't have all the answers. It's a community process, a community project as we learn and grow together. So let's go ahead and get started. Think this should, whoops. You've already heard a little bit about me and my, my history, my story, where I've gone to schools and those kind of basic things, but I want to say just a bit more. I was elected, as Mary said, as bishop in 2011. And over my almost 12 years of working with congregations, many of whom are in transition, dealing with challenges, I kept hearing again and again, congregation struggles. And having taught Death and Dying Grief courses for 15 years at the academic level and working in pastoral care with congregation or with individuals, I started seeing connections between the pastoral care I was doing with individuals while I was in parish ministry and congregations as I was looking at congregational systems. And that really got me started thinking about what role grief plays in the life of congregational systems. Because not only was I seeing evidence and signs of systemic grief within the congregations I was working with, but was seeing increasingly signs and symptoms of what we call prolonged grief disorder, where people get stuck in their grief and then need some help to move forward. We'll talk a lot more about that next time. And in the time after, so we're not going to dig into that today. So that's a little bit about me, but that's really what got me started looking at what, writing this book and doing the research to say, how is it that we can maybe approach congregations differently? Particularly as they grieve and mourn the loss of past, so that they could get past and through their grief and integrate those stories and who they are and what they're about, where they've come from into their life as they move into the future. So that's really where all of this came from, where it's going. So today I'm going to basically spend our hour laying out sort of some framework around my understanding of grief and mourning and loss. And then that'll become really the basis for the next three hours together as we go and look specifically at how this works in congregational systems and how we approach and work with congregations that are, to a certain extent, stuck in their grief and sense of loss. So today's going to be kind of general overview of grief, death, and dying, some of those kinds of things. And so we share kind of a common language as we move forward. So moving on. So my basic premise is that loss always results in grief. And that doesn't matter if loss is a simple or small loss like losing your wallet, although I suppose if you had a lot of money in your wallet, it may be a much bigger loss. But generally you lose your wallet, you feel bad about it, you get a new wallet and, you know, and move on. Those are not large, long, in-depth grief processes generally. Or if it's a major loss, like the death of a loved one, which of course is a much more intense, longer, and more difficult grief process to work through. But no matter whether the loss is small or large, we always experience some level of grief. And this can be true even if the loss is attached to something positive. For example, graduating from high school or college, taking a new job, moving to a new community. Even positive changes, even positive things like that, that result in some level of loss will generate some level of grief. Which is why I know when I was working with college students, freshmen would often come into the university and feel kind of down about the fact that they were no longer with their high school friends, that they were in a new community and all of that. And we had to sometimes work through some initial grief, even though they were really excited about being in college and being this new place and new challenges. But there was still some grief there. And I got a bit of a head of myself because I also believe that change, positive or negative, or neutral, change always results in some level of loss. Change always results in some level of loss, whether that's a small change or a large change. I was working with a church many years ago. And we were talking about ways of reaching out into their community. They really declined to be fairly small. And one of them, one of the members stood up in the meeting and said, and it was pretty much a direct quote, he said, "I would rather see this church change, or I would rather see this church close than change." And I stood there for a moment and was like, what? Closing your congregation is going to be a big change. But sometimes we don't think in those terms. But change always results in loss, and loss always results in grief. And so our congregations, all of them, because they've experienced changes, are, have experienced some level of grief and know what loss is like. Certainly in the last three years, that's true, but this has been going on, as I said before, for quite some time. This is a quote from Anne Swidler, which was reported by David Rusin in his American Congregations 2015 study. So this is well before the pandemic and all of the losses and changes we've experienced just in the last few years. But I think it still is pertinent. Swidler says this, he would disagree that we live in a period of profound social and cultural change. And that cultural change has been going on for decades, really. Cultural sociologist Anne Swidler refers to such times as unsettled. If you think about your own faith community and the ways that they've been unsettled, even just in the last few years, it's telling. But if you even think beyond that earlier on, that unsettledness in faith communities across the American context and perhaps around the world, though most of my focus has been on the American context. There's a sense of being unsettled. Things are just moving in the church and it's not that kind of status quo that people remember. By the way, she means the traditional ways of doing things typically no longer work. And new strategies for action must be developed without any assurance that they will work. And later on, down the road a bit, we're going to be talking about the difference between technical and adaptive change and how that impacts congregational systems that are grieving. But we won't get to that today. But I want to start by, whoops, wrong way. I'll give you just a few minutes to think. If you have a piece of paper, want to write this out, you can just sit and ponder this. It's up to you how you want to do this. But think for a moment about what losses you and your faith community have experienced in the last three years since the start of the pandemic. Guess we're into our fourth year now, aren't we? Or I guess we're in our third year. It's the reason why I'm not an accountant, I'm a pastor, but the last five years, the last 10 years, and what I'd like you to do is just take a moment and think about that. And if you'd like to, in the chat, just write, if you would, some of the losses that you and your faith, you and/or your faith community have experienced, just a line. So if you just take a moment, put something in the chat, and we can see some of the losses that are on your heart and your mind today. So, ready? Go ahead. Denominational split, yeah, others? Have people found the chat? That's the real question.
We have a lot of them entering into their questions, and so I'll read them to you. Loss of stability in the congregation, financial inattendence, changing denominations or churches, death of a young ruling elder to cancer, loss of people, decline in volunteerism, loss of staff, loss of longtime members, loss of weekly sharing of joys and concerns during the worship service.
Okay, and probably many, many more. Thank you. I appreciate that. Now, as you think about that list, and for some reason, even when I open up the question box, I can't see them. So that's exciting. So I appreciate you reading those. If you think about those losses, and you don't need to write this down, but just ponder this for a moment. What kind of losses drew the most significant reaction from you and why? What kind of losses drew the most significant reaction from you and why? What was it about those particular losses that triggered grief in you? And then, secondly, who helped or hindered you in dealing with those losses? Who helped you walk through those losses? And maybe there wasn't somebody, and we'll talk later about the importance of of walking together, not only with our faith communities, but with one another as leaders, as we deal with these losses. And what got in the way? What prevented your faith community or you individually from confronting and dealing with those losses and naming them? While you're thinking about that, I, before I started this work and started making these connections between individual prolonged grief disorder, complicated grieving in congregations, we used to go into congregations and we'd sit there and they'd say, oh, we just remembered back in the days when, you know, pews were full, and we remember the days when we had kids around, the young people. We remember the days when our congregation was really at the center of our small community. And, you know, we hosted all sorts of stuff. I mean, they do this litany of loss. And they'd say, oh, I wish we could go back to the good old days, wish we could go back to the good old days. In fact, I wanted to name my book Used to Be's Make Honey. Because, you know, the congregations love to get into the used to be's, but my publisher thought that that was too corny. They were probably right. But we get into the used to be's, right? And what we would, the way I would deal with that is to say, you just need to get over it. You need to get over the past. The golden age is gone. You know, get on with it. And I think in the long run, that approach, that to say, you just need to get over the past and get on with it, actually created a lot more harm than good. It became a hindrance to people confronting those feelings of loss and grief. And we'll say a lot more about that next week. By the way, most of the photography in this, in the slides is mine, from various places I've been. And the picture in these last couple of slides is actually from Biloxi after Hurricane Katrina. And it was the figurehead in the front of a boat that was destroyed in that hurricane. So loss can actually be instructive and we can learn from loss. And so we want to dig into what exactly is loss? How do we experience loss? And how do we think about loss? As we prepare ourselves and to talk about how congregations experience and deal with loss. That's an old abandoned barn in Iowa that I took just recently, not too long ago. As any of us who have served in Middle America or other rural places, we know that it's been a hard time for small communities and farming has changed dramatically. And as farms become bigger and bigger and bigger, kids don't stay on the farm. And so there's a lot of grief in our, in our small rural communities as well as in our urban centers. But you drive the highways and byways in the middle part of the country where I live, and you see a lot of barns that are actually in worse shape than this one. And so there's, people are dealing with loss, not only in their faith communities, but in their larger communities as well. And we'll talk about that later as well. So some things that we need to remember about loss. And most of these fall in the no dog community, but it's important to name them because I think a lot of times they're, they're kind of subtext and as people deal with loss. So first we need to realize that loss is a universal human experience. Every human being experiences loss. Some would argue that the very first loss that we experience as human beings is our birth. When we lose the warmth and comfort and safety of our mother's womb. But even from there, from birth, we experience loss in lots of different ways and at lots of different levels. From the separation anxiety of a child, from a parent to first going to school, to moving to all of the other kinds of losses. So loss is something we experience. We cannot live a life without experiencing some level of loss. And of course, the ultimate loss is the loss of ourself when we face our own mortality and the reality of death. So loss is always experienced as a deprivation. I mean, that's almost by definition, right? That loss always feel, makes us feel that we've been deprived of something that we are no longer connected or attached to whatever that the thing is that we've lost, whether that's a person, a place, a thing, a job, a role, a relationship, and we'll talk more about that in just a second here. And loss always exhibits some kind of response. Now, not all losses are bad. Not all losses generate negative feelings. In fact, some losses can, you know, be positive. Like, you know, the person who's driving us crazy moves to another country and we lose that relationship. We go, yay, they're no longer bothering me. But and, you know, sometimes giving something away is actually generates a good feeling as well as perhaps some sense of loss. I'm a pack rat, I confess. If I scan my camera on here, you can see this stuff that's piled up in the corner over there that I really don't want to part with. Actually, I can go just this far and show you that I have a very large collection of National Geographics that I won't part with in spite of having moved them 20 times. But there have been times when we've kind of purged our stuff, gotten rid of a bunch of things, and those are positive losses. Yet they still generate a certain amount of grief. So it always elicits some kind of response, negative, positive. There is some response when we experience any kind of loss. But loss also teaches us how to cope with future losses. And we have sometimes little mini loss rehearsals, or in fact, many death rehearsals because losses over time begin to prepare us for dealing with the bigger losses. So we lose our wallet and how people react to us, respond to us, help us through that, teaches us something about how to cope with loss and deal with loss. So that when our pet dies, when we're a little older, we already have a context and some ideas to how to respond to that loss. Now that's a more significant loss. And again, how the people around us teach us and support us, encourage us, and guide us in in experiencing that loss prepares us for even bigger losses when we start to lose loved ones to death down the road. Or when we deal with a major tragedy like the burning down of a house or big loss. So each loss we experience becomes accumulative education, cumulative teaching to help us think about and deal with the next loss. And so the way we've been socialized around loss will impact not only how we deal with loss, but how our family systems deal with loss, and how our faith community systems deal with loss. And again, we'll be expanding on that quite a bit as we go through this study. We kind of talked about loss in two different ways. There are both physical losses and symbolic losses. And as we think about our own experiences of loss, but also how our faith communities experience loss, this is important distinction to make. Because so often when we have a loss, we focus on the physical loss and we miss the symbolic losses which run deeper and are often more difficult to work through. And also will be the things that stick us in our grief and our mourning processes. We could deal with the physical stuff, or seem to at least have dealt with the physical stuff, but it's the more symbolic losses that we get stuck in. And I think that's often true in our congregations, in our faith communities. So let's take a look at each one of those. This is a tombstone just right near one of our state parks here in Oklahoma that I've been to several times because on a hike that I like to take. And I'm not sure who the person was. It's a really interesting gravestone, and there's always decorations of some sort around it. So somebody regularly tends to this particular grave marker. So physical losses are just what they, what it sounds like. There are losses of things, of relationships, of places, of possessions, or other kind of tangible items, things that we can name, even if the tangible item is a person. But it can be all, a lot of the things we've already named, you know, the loss of a job, it can be the loss of your wallet, it can be loss of some valued possession. Building, burning of a building, a building swept away by a hurricane or tornado. They're physical, they're tangible, they're easy to name. And, and so can be easily identified in terms of our grieving and what needs to be done. Symbolic losses, on the other hand, are psychosocial losses, loss of role, loss of social status, of position or identity. These are much less tangible and much harder to identify as we, as we work through our grief in our mourning. And like you say, often have a greater impact. I remember when my father died 26, seven years ago. My mother was grieved that, that loss, significant loss for a long time. And but the thing I remember her talking about at the time is, she says, she said, "Because my husband is gone, I'm now no longer a wife but a widow." And she really struggled with that. One of the ways she really struggled with that was my father and her always sat in the church in the same pew, as is often the case in a lot of communities. And there was a group of women that always sat up toward the front of the church. I remember this even when I was growing up. There's always a group and they lovingly called it the Widow's Pugh. And she, I remember her talking on the phone one time. She says, I suppose now I'm going to need to move to the Widow's Pugh. And that was very painful for her. Eventually she did go up and made some really good friends with the other women in the front. But she was no longer a couple, which meant some of their couple friends stopped inviting her over for dinner or out to do things because she wasn't a couple anymore. And that created a sense of loss. I mean, there were some friendships that changed dramatically because of my father's death. Those are not the kinds of losses that you immediately think of. And that's true in a lot of other kinds of situations as well. You'll lose, you know, you lose a significant job and you have to take a job in a different field, you know. I was an engineer, now I'm a short order cook. It's not just the loss of the job, but it's the loss of the role, the relationships, and the identity that that job gives you that can create some of the deeper. And I think that's true too in our faith communities as they experience those kinds of losses. Physical losses often, I might should change it to always result in some level of symbolic losses. Not always. Obviously, you're not going to have huge symbolic losses if you lose your wallet, although maybe. Some losses, as I said, are often grieved longer than the physical losses. And symbolic losses often have further reaching ramifications than the physical losses in terms of our roles, our relationships, our connections with other people, the way we understand ourselves in the world in which we live. Symbolic losses are sometimes in the literature referred to as secondary losses. The physical loss is the primary loss, and you know, you need to work through all the grief with that. But then symbolic losses are called secondary losses. I don't like that language primarily because it sounds like they're not as important. You know, you have your primary loss, that's the big one. And then you got to work through all these secondary things. But like I have said, sometimes the symbolic losses are in fact the more difficult ones, the deeper ones, and the ones that take the longest time to work through. And we don't want to minimize those. And so as we work with the faith community, we need to think about what are the primary losses that people just haven't come back to worship after, after the pandemic. We have a number of congregations that are experiencing that. But what are the secondary losses? The secondary losses might be, we can no longer find volunteers to do things, which means certain programs and activities aren't happening. And there's a profound sense of loss with that. So it's not just the fact people haven't come back, but it's all the ramifications and the symbolic losses. It means that, you know, we're not the big church in town anymore, which was our identity with, you know, before the pandemic, we were like one of those, one of the strong, healthy churches. And we're not that anymore. And that creates a sense of loss. So all of those things, all of the secondary losses or symbolic losses, which I would prefer to call them, become the more difficult things that we need to talk about. So it's not just that our pews are empty. It's all the things that that mean, that that means for the faith community as they work through the change they're experiencing. One of the other major challenges we have in dealing with grief in American mainstream culture, and I always like to say, make it clear that I'm talking usually about American mainstream culture because we have a lot of cultures in the American context that are, that actually do grief very well. I think of Latin A culture and some of our African descent cultures and others who actually continue to do death very, death and grief very well. And we live in the American mainstream culture. Death and grief very well and we who live in the American mainstream culture have a lot to learn in observing. And seeing how other cultures, not only in America, but also around the world. As I taught, where religion started to connect these two fields and start looking at how other religions. And religious traditions around the world deal with grief and mourning, man, I learned a lot and really could apply them into my own understanding. So, American mainstream, American culture has often been called a death denying culture. I think that that's too weak a term, I I for a long time been saying that that we are a death defying culture. Quote I have up here is from Margaret Mead, when a person is born, we rejoice. When they are married, we jubilate, but when we die, we try to pretend like nothing happened. And more and more are are mainstream approach to death and dying is to cremate the body. Maybe have a box ashes around and then do celebrations of life, so we just talk about the person, but we really don't talk about death or grief. Funerals have become. Traditional funerals have become less and less, and so I think Margaret Mead's comment has only become more true. But the thing that really convinced me that we're becoming a death defying culture is. This is quite a number of years ago, before I was bishop, I was listening to one of the morning shows, I don't remember which one it was, but there was a doctor on. And she was talking about. Talking about, I remember it was giving up something or doing something that quote would reduce our chances of death by a hundred percent. Wait, wait a second, nothing can reduce our chances of death by a hundred percent, a hundred percent of us are going to die. That's just kind of one of the realities that we all live with, right? But that's what she said, I thought, okay, she just misspoke, well then, oh, I know, it was a couple of weeks later, I was listening to NPR. And another doctor said, if you did this or didn't do this, it would reduce your chances of death by a hundred percent. And it was like, wow, that's twice, and since then, I've heard others make similar kinds of comments. In fact, just this last week, I was reading an article, now it's become a little bit more subtle, people will say it will reduce your. Chances of premature death by, you know, a hundred percent or whatever, so at least there's some acknowledging, but again. It talked about reducing in different, at different age levels, it could reduce your probability of death by a hundred percent. It's like, do we really believe that there are things we can do that can prevent death and keep us from dying? The Egyptian culture was a death defying culture and I think sometimes we're not too far away from from them. You know, if we just eat right, if we just exercise properly, if we take the right medicine, we're all going to live forever, right? Which makes it really hard in a congregational system, but even with individuals. To have a a good, healthy conversation about grief and loss. And even in the way we do grief, you know, if you lose somebody significant to you to death. You might get up to the funeral, if there's a funeral or a celebration of life to 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 mourn. But then you expect to go right back to being yourself, reengage in your life, go back to your social stuff. Be able to focus and concentrate at work and anybody's had a significant loss knows that just isn't what happens. And then people go, well, what's wrong with you, why don't you just get on with it, right? So same thing we're doing to our congregations before we started to shift our approach, you know, just get over it, get on with it. Instead of actually dealing with the grief and grief undoubt with always winds up getting driven underground and then it comes out sideways. And we'll say more about that here in a minute. I'm gonna stop right there and say, Mary, are there questions or comments or anything that we need to. Pay attention to, I've been rolling along and I can't, like I said, I can't see the questions in the question box.
Um, there are a number of really excellent comments that indicate that the folks who are participating with you are definitely. In sync with what you're saying, talking about the loss of dream, vision, goals for the future, loss of longtime members and responsible workers. It's almost as if they have experienced the thing, same things that you are discussing right now, so. There's certainly understanding and I think you're resonating with folks.
Good, thank you, yeah, feel free if there are questions, though, just stop me, because I'll just keep rolling, because like I said, for some reason, I can't see the questions. So we've talked a little bit about loss, now we want to talk about in the ten fifty minutes we have left here, start talking about grief. And whatever we don't get through today, that's fine, we'll pick it up next time, but I want to start looking at the grief process itself. So. I call this new, new ways of thinking about grief and loss, actually, they're really not that new anymore. I really should just take that out of there, the trouble is, is that. In our across board, I, everybody's still talking about Elizabeth Kubler Ross and her five stages of grief, which actually. Originally didn't even apply to grief, but we won't go there today. But I hear it on TV shows, I hear it on so-called experts, doctors and I mean, it's still everywhere. And so. Kubler Ross did her work in the late nineteen sixties and I'd like to say that talking about grief and loss from the perspective of Kubler Ross's work. Would kind of be like talking about the use of technology in religious services from the perspective of the touch tone phone. Which, by the way, the touch tone phone came out just about the same time as as Kubler Ross's work came out, so they're almost contemporary late sixties. Elizabeth Kubler Ross is one of the pioneers in the field. She identified five fairly common grief responses. Even even Kubler Ross, where the end of her life and career kind of got rid of the whole idea of stages, you know, the first, you know. First, there's denial and there's bargaining, you know, you know, five stages, one at a time, and if you don't follow the five stages, you know, you're not doing it right. We have come to understand over the what, almost forty fifty years now since Kubler Ross did her work. That grief is a much more complex experience than what Kubler Ross described, and like I say, even Kubler Ross figured that out before the end of her, her life work. So grief is a process that focuses on tasks, not on stages. And that's important, not only for our own understanding of how we grieve, but as we think about how our faith communities. Work through and or don't work through grief, there are a variety of different task models. We're not, we don't have the time to look at a whole variety of models, but there's one that I've used for quite a long time. That we'll get to here in just a moment, it's not the simplest of the models, there are some others that are are actually much more refined, but I like this one because as I've worked with parishioners. This is one that people kind of get, it's simple, it's easy for people to grasp, but I think it touches on this most salient points, but before that. We have to understand that the grief does not move like this, it's not a straight line, it's not first you do this, then you do this, this, and then you're done. It's really, my experience of grief personally and as I work with grieving people and grieving organizational structures is. Oops, is that it actually runs more like this, it's two steps forward, one step back, some days are good, some days are bad. You feel kind of more normal some days and other days you can't get off the couch because you're still crying. Six months, a year out, you think, okay, maybe I'm finally over it, another wave hits you. And that's the way grief grief works, it's, it's not a consistent pattern kind of a thing. And as we'll find out here in a minute, no, no two grief experiences are alike and there are reasons for that. So the task model that I that I use is one that was developed originally by William Worden, he's refined it. Several times, the last version of his book, Grief Counseling, Grief Therapy, A Handbook for Mental Health Practitioners, fourth edition. Came out in two thousand and nine, I don't know if he's put anything else since then, he's starting to get toward the end of his career. But I still find this a really useful and helpful way of talking about. Uh, the grief process, so he identifies four tasks. Now, because we tend to think in a linear fashion, you have to do these in some kind of an order. I present them as he does in the order that generally we encounter these tasks. But in reality, we can be working on all of these tasks at the same time in different orders, you can be doing. Task one and then be doing task four and then be back to doing task one, because of course grief is that squiggly thing. So this is not a set of linear stages, this is a a collection of tasks. And so the first task is accepting the reality of the loss. When, when a loss first hits us, our initial response is one of denial, as Cooper Ross stated, or shock. We can't get our head around it, we can't believe the person is gone, we can't believe that the job's no longer there, we can't believe that. That the house that we've lived in for twenty years is now cinder and ashes because of forest fire came through and wiped out the whole neighborhood. I mean, we just can't get our head around it and anybody's had that experience of loss, a significant loss knows that kind of numb feeling. Oh, that kind of like, just this can't be real sort of feeling, but to illustrate my point. That these tasks don't happen in linear fashion, my father had been gone. Five years, maybe six years and it was Christmas time, my father, I I'm five foot, five and a half, five, six, not a very tall guy. My father was over six feet tall, he was six one or something like that, had beautiful white hair, tall man. And I was in the shopping mall, at Christmas time, it was crowded and people were moving around and. I was there and and we were in up in front of me, maybe twenty feet, fifteen feet, something like that. Is a very tall man with beautiful white hair walking away from me, so from the back and I thought to myself. What's my dad doing at the shopping mall and I took two steps in that direction and then went, dummy, he's been dead for six years. I was right back in tax test, task one, now I was in task one for about thirty seconds before it occurred to me that, of course, it's not my dad. And I really wasn't a dummy because it's actually fairly normal. But for a moment, six years after my dad's death, I was still working through that little piece of grief that I still carried with me. And was back to working on task one, that's the way these tasks work. But initially, you start with that kind of numb unreal feeling when you have a significant loss. The second task and the one that we often try to skip is experiencing and working through the pain of the grief. Because we live in a death defying or at the very least a death denying culture, the idea is we're going to push all that stuff down, we don't want to deal with it. We get rid of it as quickly as we can to frequently, we try to medicate the pain of our grief. Either by medication that's prescribed to us by a well-meaning physician and sometimes that's necessary or using alcohol or other kinds of self-medicating. Because we don't want to deal with the pain. But if you don't deal with the pain, like I said before, it comes out sideways and at some point we have to confront that work through it. And when we tell congregation space communities, you know, just to get over it, what we're saying is your pain's not legitimate. That loss that you're experiencing, it's not legitimate and so don't deal with it, you need to just shove it away somewhere. And what happens in these these systems is that it comes out sideways and frequently as I go in and work with congregations that are having. That are having conflict, once we start peeling back the layers, often what I find at the bottom of that is some level of grief or sense of loss. That's emerging in unhealthy ways, not always, but frequently. The third task is adapting to the world without the deceased. And we're going to get to that, I think, in the third and fourth part of the series, where we talk about what does it mean to begin to adapt. To the changes we've experienced and and how do we begin to do that and how do we think about that? In light of our sense of loss and and our grief at the things that we've lost in those changes. So we begin to adapt to the world without the deceased and. That can be very difficult work, now sometimes we start this task on on day one, I I know more than one. Older person and elder who has lost a spouse, whose family immediately comes in and says, mom, dad, you you can't live in this. You know, in this big house anymore by yourself, you just can't, and we're going to need to move you into an assisted living or apartment or whatever. And so sometimes those adaptations have to start almost on day one. They're better if, you know, if you can kind of get through some of those initial tasks first, but sometimes. That just isn't going to happen because of person's own infirmities, because of their vulnerabilities and other kinds of needs. And so you have to start making those adaptations just right out, right out the door after a significant loss. And so. But at some point, those adaptations become more normal, more natural, more comfortable. I worked with a woman one time whose daughter had been killed in a car accident and. Just didn't touch the daughter's room, it was a teenage daughter, didn't touch the daughter's room and. I was doing pastoral care, we had her in in counseling and therapy, I remember she came in one day to the church and she said to me. Well, she says, and this was eighteen months after the daughter's death, she said, I dusted my daughter's room today. And I said, really, how was that, she said, well, she said, it was hard, I cried the whole time. But she said, I think maybe now I can. Think about doing something else in that room and her therapist really supported her in that and but. Sometimes it's a long time before we really begin doing that adapting, and so the question is how to faith communities and faith systems. Encourage, support and foster that adaptation at the right time, rather than trying to force somebody into that. Come on, okay, now my. Now my mouth is not behaving. Okay. And then finally, the fourth task is finding an enduring connection with the deceased in the midst of embarking on a new life. Grief is not about getting over that which we've lost, grief is about finding a new place in our hearts and in our lives for the memory of what we've lost. Whether that's a person, a place, a thing, a job or role. And so it's finding a new place so that though, so that that memory can inform who we are, what we're about. So we can value that memory, draw strength from that memory, but can engage in life in in new ways based on that. And that's really. That's that's really where the title of the book comes from, how can we. Move those losses in our faith communities into a place of memory, of valued memory, of cherished memory. And then draw strength for them as we move forward and we could do that during the last, talk about that during the last, our last week together. So the purpose of grief then is not to sever emotional bonds with that which we've lost, we're with the deceased, that was Sigmund Freud and like. Freud was wrong on a number of things, he was wrong in this too. But instead to redefine our relationship with the deceased or with that which we have lost. And nostalgic thinking, and we're going to talk a lot about the difference between nostalgia and yearning, probably next time. Nostalgic thinking is actually a positive coping mechanism and it's not something to be avoided. So often we talk about nostalgia as if it were a bad thing. But it's not, it's actually a very normal, natural, human coping mechanism. It only becomes problematic when it becomes yearning and we're just going to let that hang out there because that's really where we're going to go next time. So to kind of wrap up today's session and then we'll, we'll open it up for questions, comments. Grief is normal and it's expected, I've had people within my own faith tradition who seem to think that if they have faith. Christian faith, faith in Jesus, that they shouldn't grieve. And sorry, even Jesus wept for Lazarus, it is to according to the Gospel of John. Grief is normal, it's natural, it's expected, I'm much more concerned with people who don't grieve, honestly. Because it generally means that all that stuff is getting stuffed down somewhere, it's unique to each loss. Because each relationship is different, because grieving is directly connected to our relationship. With whatever it is that we've lost, and so my relationship with my father is very different than my relationship, say, to my uncle. Who who died not many years after my dad did. It's very different than my relationship to my boyhood dog, which is probably one of the most intense grief grief experiences I've ever had. And I'm a little ashamed to say that, but because, but my relationship with my dad was much more at an arm's length and that dog was. Went everywhere and did everything with me, different relationship, different grief. So grief is, each grief experience is unique because each loss is unique, because each relationship is unique. Grief is a healing process, it's designed to help heal that wound of that that loss occurs. But it leaves a scar. And because the only way that we would ever stop grieving a significant. And because the only way that we would ever stop grieving a significant loss is to forget. And certainly for significant relationships, we don't want to forget them. Well, there may be our some relationships we prefer to forget, but the most part, we don't want to forget those relationships. And so grief really never totally goes away. But at some point, it does scab over and it becomes a scar and a memory. I was talking to somebody just, just the other day before, who talked about how, how about those, those losses become blessed memories. And I think that's true. Grief can lead to personal growth. Grief changes us, deepens us, broadens our perspective, can make us more empathetic, and affect us in a whole variety of different ways. And ultimately, it's not a process. It's not stages. It's a journey. And it's a journey that lasts a lifetime. And that's okay. I want to just zip through these real quick. And I'll let you read them. Grief is not an emotion. A lot of people confuse and think grief, grief is an emotion. It's not. It includes emotions. Like I said, Kubler Ross identified five common experiences, but there's a lot more. So emotions associated with grief, remorse, regret, relief, guilt, anger, shame, anxiety, loneliness, anguish, abandonment, fear, sadness, joy, yearning, depression, irritation, acceptance, confusion, and on and on. It's not just five. It's a whole cacophony of emotional experiences, sometimes one at a time, sometimes all at once. I've known people that can be in deep denial and totally angry about a loss all at the same time, while at the same time saying, yep, well, the person's gone. And, oh, and now I'm angry again. So, and all the rest. It has physical components. I just, one of our retired pastors just died last week because his wife died a few months ago, and he was in frail health. And honestly, I think it was the physical weight of his grief that, that ended his life. And we know, I think people literally can die of a broken heart. And there's all sorts of studies done in terms of the physical impact of grieving, including that mourners, mortality rates actually go up for people who are mourning. It has social impact. We've talked a lot about that. That's a lot of those symbolic losses we were discussing. And it can have a spiritual impact, can lead to a loss of meaning, can trigger searches for new meaning. It can cause us to question our spiritual beliefs and our faith. But it can also strengthen our spiritual beliefs and faith and can generate anger at God if that's where our faith is, can generate doubt in a variety of other things that impact our human spirits as we go forward. So I already said this, journey of grief never ends, not completely. Just to grieve. And that's really as we talk about grief and congregational systems and the systems of faith communities. The only way to help a congregation get through the changes, experiences of losses, the loss that they've had, is to help them to grieve. And that's where we're going to go next time. We got a few minutes left. Mary, are there questions, comments, thoughts?
I will invite everyone to write their questions in the question box. And while they're thinking about what questions they would ask, I'll ask one. We don't actually know where the participants, what structures they come from, what faith communities they come from. So I'll just ask this from one who's coming from a judicatory kind of structure. I'm wondering if other judicatory leaders, bishops, superintendents, whatever that regional ministers, whatever that title might be, are they having conversations together, peer to peer, about these complicated issues and loss?
Boy, I'd like to think so. I don't know. I, I have been invited to, to do this presentation by other Christian judicatories. I did a workshop for the American Baptists out in New York several months ago. I know they're wrestling with some of this stuff. Next fall, I've got one for one of the presbyteries. So, you know, I've, I've done this presentation. I know there are people that aren't Lutheran that are buying the book. I have not really had any conversation with, with other faith groups. And that, I think, would be really interesting because you know, different faith traditions approach the whole subject of grief, loss and death in, in different ways. And, and understand it as part of their faith system in different ways. So I think that would be an interesting place to do more research.
We'll look forward to the sequel on the book there because I do think it's an interesting question. And as a United Methodist, I know that there's an awful lot of grief right now and stress related to the changes that are happening within my particular system. I see a question here. A couple of questions. Will there be a link to view this episode again? Yes, Heather will send you a link to the video. Is there any written material that deals with grief in institutions and offers tools on how to work through them? Bishop Mike, do you want to address that one?
Other than my book, no. The, that, that was, that's actually pretty close to accurate. In fact, that was when, when I was working with my publisher, who they were terrific, but they said, are there any other books on the subject, particularly grief and faith community systems? And I said, well, not really. And they said, well, is there, there even a need for it? I mean, nobody's written on it. Yeah, there's a need. There has been a lot of work done on, in education system schools for how to handle and, and deal with grief in schools. Some of that's translatable. But there's not been a lot of work done on how grief works systemically. Because most of the stuff on schools is about how to, how to help individual students cope and deal with the death of a teacher or classmate or, you know, something. But very little, or much less, at least that I've been able to discover, Chris Evans, on how the loss affects the system. I had, I've drawn a lot of family systems, and even, even that is somewhat limited. There's a couple of really fine scholars from Australia who've done a lot of work on grief in family systems that I found really, really helpful and translatable into, into the work that I was doing in churches. No, I think it's a fairly new area of thought and, and research. And I've had a couple of people read the book and say, wow, this really applies to kind of how, how we're experiencing grief in our, you know, in our business. And, you know, so I think it's applicable, but yeah, no, I think this, this is a fairly new area of inquiry.
And an important area. We have another question that is somewhat related. At some point, could we address grief of losing members who leave supposedly over issues of national politics, COVID procedures, or denominational decisions? Obviously, the presenting reason for leaving is not the full picture. Thanks.
Almost always. Yeah, we can try to work that in. It's, I don't know that we're going to get that far into the weeds in four hours. You know, where we can look at specific, so specific cases. But we will talk about tools for beginning to, to beginning to address those kinds of things. As people leave, we'll be talking a little bit about change and some of the things behind change. Next time, we're going to talk about how grief works in a congregational system. And I'll try to keep some of those things in mind as I think about. But yeah, the presenting issue is almost never the presenting issue. This conflict, if people aren't leaving, and there's this conflict, sometimes the issue isn't the issue. Which means you need to kind of get, start to dig under, underneath what's going on.
Well, we are. I'm sorry.
I was just, you were about to say the same thing. I think we're at time. Thank you. That just gets us rolling. But next time, like I say, oh, I've got another slide. Next time, we're going to talk about loss in congregational systems. And so we're going to get much more focused on how these larger patterns of grief that we've been talking about this time, impact and works systemically in faith communities. So.
Thank you so much. I know you all joined me in, in thanking Bishop Mike for his presentation today. And we hope to see all of you next week at the same time. Remember to go to the webinar hub at crisiscareministries.net for resources and other information about the series. And watch your email inboxes for a link to the recordings of today's session. So thank you all. Be safe and blessings to you all.
Thank you.